Thank you.
I call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and welcome, everyone who's watching from home. Just a reminder, as people have expressed, they're having difficulty hearing us, so just a reminder, please try and use your microphone as we continue to work on the sound system to improve that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Gatt?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Reichert?
Present.
Trustee Wigington?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Okay. Next, we would be to approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from November 21st, 2023. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the minutes are approved. We will be comments from the audience on agenda items. If there's anyone here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the mic and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Going once. Going twice. Public comments are closed. Onto old business. Any old business come for the board.
Mayor, I just have one thing. Last meeting, the board asked me to look into monthly water billing as far as some options on what the board could do. Obviously, this would not be a quick process. What I'm recommending is that first, we'd have to change the ordinance, and then we kind of do a media blitz, pushing out and encourage residents to go to e-billing. And we could do this through two cycles of billing, so it would give us an idea. Right now, we have about 70% of our water bills are paid in person. We could also, you know, educate them on this new option, hopefully push that number way down, so that would have a huge effect on personnel, because we talked about, if we did it immediately, if you decided tonight that you wanted to move forward with monthly billing, we would have to add personnel to handle all the postage and handle what comes with that. So, and that would be about a two- to three-month process to get that done. The first option would be about a six-month process. We would be able to tell, kind of, what percentage are we looking at as far as E., and that will have a huge amount or a huge effect on personnel. Let's say if we get it down to 30%, we probably wouldn't have to add an employee. So, that's my recommendation, is to take it in steps. And then we can, then we need to discuss if we want to go to monthly or bimonthly, whatever the board, you know, whatever they would like. So, that's kind of where I'm at on it. I've had, I had good meetings with Stephanie and Emily on this, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. I think the option one would be the best, to take it slow and just kind of see what, in six months, we would know where we're at.
I'm quite surprised that 70% of people pay it in person.
I was thinking the same thing.
Wow. I got like maybe, I don't have any bills I pay in person.
So, I think with the media blitz, social media, face-to-face, when they come in, staff could also educate them on this new option. I think we could really get that number down where we're not adding personnel and put that towards other expenses. So, that's my recommendation. And again, I would like to see a couple of cycles, and that would be about six months.
I know this is something that we have the budget for if we even wanted to do it, but I know some bills that you e-bill with, you get like a discount for paying online. It saves for the postage, it saves with needing the personnel, so I don't know if we get to the point where we need to synthesize people.
I think right now, the fee is attached to the, obviously, the size of the water bill.
Right.
So, yeah.
Chief, minus the 70% in person, I know the option, the Water Department is to pay auto payment, EFT, just right out of your bank account. How many people do that? So, I mean, I think that would be the most cost-effective way, is that just comes right out of a person's bank account.
Right. Well, 70% is in person, the other 30, I don't know how they break it down, but you're exactly right, and I don't know. I'm sure our new system has that option, doesn't it, Stephanie, regarding whether, can you pay whether it's credit card or directly out of a, like a direct deposit?
With the new system, you can pay credit card, debit card, you can pay immediately through a check, you can sign up for automatic withdrawals through your banking account, you can do PayPal. If you can dream of it, I think you can do it.
So, yes.
I think a lot of people don't know that, though. Like, I just don't think a lot of people know that that's an option. Like, I've had a lot of people come to me and say, like, they didn't know they could pay online, or they didn't know that that automatic withdrawal was an option, so I think educating them would make a vast difference.
I know we've had, we've had routine residents that have had so much trouble paying online on our old system, that have got into the new system and love it. So, I know that those complaints are way down. So, I think it's working, it's just a matter of getting the word out to everybody, and I'm confident with the media blitz and with staff at the window, I think we can get that way down. So, you know, we'll get where we need to be without adding personnel.
Yep.
Is this a thing that we could use? I mean, we know that 55% of our community is rental-based. If we did something with the landlord registration, where we required landlords to use the EFT to pay water bills, we could potentially reduce some of our expenses that way.
Well, I think the, I think the media blitz is very broad, I think it includes, it would include the landlord registration program. I'll have to get with council to see if that changes any ordinance-wise, but we can look into that, but I would expect if we do move forward this, it would include them as well.
I'm curious, I mean, you're talking about going from paying every three months to monthly. I'm kind of stupid question, because I'm sure you're not going to charge us each month for our waste pickups and stuff, because right now, we have the waste pickups on the bill, garbage and everything. Are you going to like to buy that three ways?
That wouldn't affect that.
Okay, so is that only going to be on the bill every three months, then?
Well, that, yeah, that's what we were getting back to, how much more, this is going to be in postage, that's why it's going to be, it's going to be double the amount, unless we get that number down.
Okay. I mean, personally, I kind of like paying every three months, that's how I know when it's coming, because then after I get that, then right after that, it comes GPSD, and, you know, I can adjust, but I'm old and I don't like change.
It's whatever the board would like. If they want to change the billing, I recommend option one, to see if we can get that down. I think that no matter what, I think we should try to educate the residents on the billing, and make it easier for everybody, so.
Yeah, the PayPal options are pretty cool.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Am I right, there's no charge for an automatic withdrawal out of your bank account?
That's incorrect.
Oh, it's, okay, it's not as much, though?
It's less, yeah.
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, even for the ACH transactions, there's a fee?
Through Apple's cloud, there is, yes.
It's very minimal, though, compared to using like your debit card.
Right.
Any other discussion on that? Any other old business?
Just one more update, Mayor. The dispensary on Ward Drive will have their grand opening Saturday at 10 o'clock, so we've been working with management for security purposes, so you'll have some of our officer there as well at night, so that's good. And again, 10 o'clock, and contrary to popular belief, they do sell cookies, just to make sure you're in the right checkout line, so.
Okay, let's get on to new business. The first is administration and finance. Trustee DeVore has four items here. The first is approval of ordinance 2023-1716, and ordinance abating special service area number one taxes for the year 2023 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds and alternate revenue source series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1716.
Second.
Okay, so this ordinance and the next one kind of go together, so I'm just going to explain them together. This is for the Treskers' property, so we do this every year. Essentially, we have these tax levies in here against the real estate tax, in case there wasn't enough money in the account to cover the bonds that we have on their behalf, as well as like the interest on those bonds. Every year, they've had more than enough, so we are abating both of these ordinances, since we don't need to levy the taxes for those bonds.
Questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Next, approval of ordinance 2023-1717, and ordinance abating the general obligation taxes levied for the year 2023 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1717.
Second.
Go ahead, please.
Same thing, so it's just same explanation, we just have to approve both of them separately.
Trustee DeVore, do you have a maturity date on these bonds? I mean, how many more years do we need to continue to do this?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Counsel, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, and I'm looking.
They were 30-year bonds, I think, weren't they?
I want to say 30 years sounds, sounds right.
29, 28, 29 years?
Another 29 years?
Well, I think, but counsel, if you've got a definite answer.
I don't have a definite answer, but it's at least 20, and then possibly 30.
And these were the ones we renegotiated to a lower?
That's right.
Refinancing.
Refinanced.
Okay. I don't think the bond market is.
We're not doing that again.
Favorable.
We definitely did it at the right time.
Any other discussion? And incidentally, just to respond back to your remarks, Trustee Wigington, I don't think it makes sense to pay down this debt at all, since it's such a favorable interest rate.
I think they, and I think that it started in 2015 or 2016, so we would be in.
They did, but we redid them last year.
Okay, so then we restarted it.
It's like refinancing a mortgage.
So, we restarted it.
I'm fairly confident it's 20 years.
So, we're at 19.
But I don't have it right in front of me, so I don't want to be held back.
But on that note, that was a good move on behalf of this board, as counsel said.
We saved a lot of money.
We saved, we acted at the right time, we did what we needed to do, so I don't mind passing this to abate the taxes on the people.
It was six-figure savings, I want to say, a couple hundred thousand, maybe.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Back to the question, if there's no other discussion, madam clerk.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Approval of ordinance 2023-1718, adoption of the 2023-2024 tax levy for the village and the library. Trustee DeVore had asked for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1718.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
So, you have in front of you our annual levy ordinance and the list of what we would be levying for. We don't have the numbers for the library, but obviously Sean is here and can talk to us about that. We've been really fortunate to be able to decrease the levy in the last few years, and this one does have a slight increase on it, so the dollar amount on the increase this year would be $25,877.
If you don't mind, could we ask Sean to give his presentation first?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Welcome, Sean.
Hi, just briefly, I won't discuss this too much, but our levy is just slightly higher than it was in the past few years. It's, I think, went up by 1,670 over last year, but we've been staying right about 530,000, 540,000 for the last five years, and we've been successfully operating off of that. In the future, I don't know if that's going to be the case, I mean, you never know. We've talked about construction, remodeling, I've been talking about that for a couple of years now, and I should probably give you some, some genesis behind that. We were the fortunate recipients of a donation from the estate of Rudy Hoban about four years ago, four years ago, and in just the past few months, that estate has finally closed, and we've been able to talk about what we're getting out of that. That donation was sizable, and it was the reason why the board decided that we needed to start talking about remodeling. I'm sure it's not going to be enough to do what we need to do, because we've got some, some serious roof issues to deal with, and we need a major remodel of pretty much everything inside. But the donation, as it, as it came out, was just north of $316,000, so that's the largest donation we've ever had at the library, period. That, along with the very generous replacement taxes we've been getting over the last couple of years, have been helping a lot to give us a background for, for doing that remodeling and construction. But we are at the point right now where we've got a pretty solid building program that we're working with. I think that's going to be done within the next couple of months, and we're going to start looking at hiring an architect toward later in the spring. Hopefully, we'll have a solid plan later in the year. Maybe by this time next year, we'll actually have something that we can, we can take out and, and maybe get some grant money from the, from the state, which I think would be sizable. I think we're in good state to receive considerable grant funds from the, from the state if we're, if we're successful there, so. But that's where we're at right now. The levy is, is not significantly different, so I think we're, we're good. If you have any questions?
Sean, I think we know the answer to this. Virtually all of your revenue is, is property tax.
Correct. Correct, yeah, yeah, by far. I mean, we do, we take in very little money from fees or rental or anything like that. Everything is, yeah, by far, is property tax, replacement tax is higher right now than it used to be, but that provides a smaller portion of what we bring in, yeah.
Wayne, Sean and I were chatting recently about some of their, their needs. Would we be able to use Cardinal Infrastructure to help them write some of the grants for them?
We can certainly discuss that, yeah. Need to know what types of grants you're going after and, you know, which departments, agencies typically they'd be funded through, but yeah, we can talk.
Okay, yeah.
Now, the Peoria libraries are limited just to citizens that live in Peoria Heights?
No. Most of the libraries, well, all the libraries, public libraries and library districts around here, we all share resources to a great extent, and because we're pretty much landlocked and surrounded by Peoria, we have a fair number of Peoria patrons that come into our library. They tell us that they like us better than Peoria Public, so I, I like that, but.
Everything's better in the Heights.
Everything is better in the Heights, yeah. We're very, we're very proud of what we're able to do here as a landlocked entity in the middle of Peoria, but yeah. I will mention one other thing that, and I apologize to anybody who's, has a relationship with the Peoria Journal-Star, but we did take out a subscription to News Bank recently, which gives us the ability to offer the Peoria Journal-Star and a number of local and state papers free to anybody who is a resident of Peoria Heights and has a library card. So, Peoria Journal-Star, Panograph, St. Louis, whatever the paper is down there, Chicago Sun Times, USA Today, all those papers are accessible digitally, online. You can get more information from our website or give us a call, but it's free, got a library card, it's all free, yeah.
Sean, let me ask you, and I would be kind of failing my dot, but then ask you this. So, I see the numbers that we have, we don't have the breakdown, obviously, of your numbers, but what I do see is about 533, 570. Does that sound right to you?
I think that's correct, yeah. That's, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I've got.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
So, I have a few questions regarding our levy. So, ours is increased by $25,000.
Yes.
And are we running a surplus? I thought we discussed that when we ran surpluses the last couple of years.
We are.
Significant surpluses.
I'm glad you asked that question, because I was going to talk about this. Normally, over the last few years, I have said to the administrator, would like to see the levy set at. I think the staff and the administrator, being financially prudent, knowing some of the expenses coming up, decided to raise it, but we had a conversation before the meeting, we can cut that $26,000 out of the budget somewhere, so if it's the board's decision not to raise the levy at all, we'll be fine.
So, the levy we approve now is going to be payable next year, is that how it goes? So, that's when all the value, new valuations kick in?
After the quadrennial appraisal, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not really comfortable increasing the levy.
Entertain a motion to amend it.
Okay.
Are you making that?
Yeah, please.
So, your motion would be to not raise the levy, leave it at the current rate, does that sound right, counsel, or?
Yes, if we had the number, that would make me even more comfortable, but.
The actual dollar amount of what we levy last year?
Well.
Now, what would the, now, $25,000?
The amount that we need to decrease to match.
Oh, I have it. To decrease the match, we would have to $25,877.
Thank you, Trustee DeVore. Is that, can you incorporate, or incorporate that, please, Trustee Weisenberg into a motion?
Sure. That number one more time? Sure. Mayor, I move to amend our levy to reduce it by $25,877.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the?
We want that to come from the general corporate front, or do please mention.
General. General corporate.
General.
I assume it's my. General, general, please.
Thank you. So, I'll have a discussion on that. So, I, I was looking at the general fund expenses, and it's, for a general fund, what we're levying to the public is $94,397 under this levy. Obviously, that would be reduced by that $25,000 number, but it's unclear to me what numbers are coming out of that. I mean, is that just remaining out of the other sources that we had maximized, out of all the other sources, and this was what was left over, the 94,000?
I believe, yes, after the police pension, and yeah.
Okay. Because I see, you know, the majority of what we tax our residents, I mean, the far, far majority of what we tax our residents on is the police pension, $450,000 a year, and we've been adding in addition to that to try to catch up on our obligations in the past.
Correct.
My concern is, to administration, is that, is this, is this a number that is currently viable now that we're adding fire pensions to this as well? I mean, are we levying enough under this line item?
Well, we, we don't know what that number is yet this year. I'm confident we can, well, we have to pay, obviously, the minimum. Now, in the past, to catch up, and we all know the history there, why we had to do that, we won't be able to do that, okay? I know we're, we're at 74%, I believe, which is, which is at a great pace, especially from where we were, but as far as the days of doubling up those payments, I do not see that happening. And the reason I say that, I've had, you know, I've had very productive meetings with Chief Decker in the last couple of weeks, and he's going, we discussed the future of the fire department, majority personnel. I expect him to come to this board next, the meeting on the 19th, if not, the first meeting in January, give the board an update and recommendation, and numerous options. But having, discussing this with him, and I think we all, we all know this sitting here today, that that isn't going to be cheap when we're talking about, you know, adding full-time personnel. So, to answer your question, Trustee Wigington, yeah, we, of course, we have to make the mandated amount, but we will not be doubling up this year. But we're in, the police pension is in better shape than I've ever seen it, and I've been here 30 years, so the last five, five or six years, we've made huge strides.
So.
Trustee Wigington, I do think we need to wait till the actuaries weigh in and give us, you know, a target number, and that won't be until probably the next, the next year.
Okay. So, I know I seconded this motion, but from an administration perspective, where are you seeing these cuts coming out of, for 25,000-ish?
Well, we have some way with the police grant we received on personnel, that's going to, that's going to free up some money in the general fund, I expect some of it will come from there. There are some other, other programs that I'm not sure, moving forward, if we're going to continue to retain, that'll be something I'll look at, but again, I won't really know until we get a little further in the budget, but I'm confident that we can find that amount of money.
Chief, would you, would you mind, we forgot to actually comment on that police grant, would you mind explaining that and how we got the police grant?
Oh, yeah, we, yes, we received.
Recent letter.
Yeah, well, that, you're talking about two different things. This was the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back to the 200,000 we received for the police grant, for the salary grant. We did just receive another $50,000 for, from Senator Kayler, and I thought we had that to read tonight, we'll have, we'll have it read next meeting, but yeah, we did just get another 50,000, so we'll, it'll free up enough money to cover that, Trustee Wigington.
Well, you know, I was, I was at a public safety neighborhood watch meeting, and I mentioned that I know Chief Decker needed a vehicle, and in order to, you know, save the taxpayers some money, we had a, another, a police vehicle reallocated to the fire department, cost savings of roughly $30,000. So, I know that we're looking for every avenue to save the Heights residents on taxes. Do you think this $25,000 savings on, on cutting this from the levy is, is manageable?
Yeah, it is manageable, and yes, we did. Chief Decker stressed that they did need another vehicle from the fire department, so we did, I did pull one from the police fleet, an unmarked Charger, and we're, we're getting, it's already outfitted and lights, and that price tag is more like about $40,000 with equipment.
Excuse me.
So, he's very happy with that, and so am I, it's working out well. We have to do just a couple of modifications on it, but yeah, we did pull a vehicle out of the fleet to save that money.
Thank you. And I think we, we tend to overestimate our expenses and underestimate our, our income, so I think we'll find this, it'll be all right.
Chief, just a few questions for some clarity. So, the, the tax levy that we applied towards the police pension, that's to catch up, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that isn't what our police officers cost us today, that's what the few, previous boards failed to contribute by 2040, we have to be 90% funded or something like that.
Correct, correct.
So, the, the fire pensions, when we get to that point.
Right.
We're going to pay as we go.
Yes.
There's going to be no debt, there's going to be no debt that we need to catch up on.
Starting from scratch, correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So, there won't be any massive debts from, from the fire pensions, that we're going to pay for that expense as it occurs.
I would hope so.
As we should do.
I mean, it would all depend on how many positions are filled and if it's affordable.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. Right.
So, that's a board decision, and I would just weigh in, Trustee Weisenberg, I would say we are caught up in police pension, 74% funded, I mean, that's, so I think we're good shape there.
Yeah, if you were to roll back, I mean, just 12 years, you were talking about, you know, we were in the 30s.
Right.
I mean, we, you know, there was, there was a point where, you know, even the minimum mandate wasn't being paid, so I'm pretty proud of that, and everybody up here should be proud of that, just we've made, you know, huge leaps in the last, you know, handful of years to get caught up, so.
Right, and my point was, what I was trying to make is if we were already 90%, then that 450, we would have to spend somewhere else, potentially on fire salaries.
Yeah, that mandated number would be lower.
Right, right.
Yeah, I just have to say that when I first got into office many moons ago, and I first heard about the police pension fund and how far behind we were, I didn't think I'd ever see it get to this point. I thought, oh, we can, we're not going to accomplish by blowing it off like previous administrations, but I'm like, I thought, I don't see any way that we're ever going to get it, but here we are. All you got to do is just keep plugging away, so I'm really happy to see where we're at, where we're at now, because like I said, when I first got in and he showed me, I was, you know, but.
Thank you, Trustee Gatt, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, trustee, yeah, thank you, Jeff. Anyone else on, on the amendment? I, I would just like to make, uh, one other comment before we call the vote, um, I think this, we're talking about twenty-six thousand dollars on a pretty big budget, I think this illustrates, um, how little we depend on, and how little we tax our citizens when it comes to their property, so I think it shows that we're a sales tax-based, um, government and economy, and I, I think that's important, so, um, this is on the amendment to lower the levy to last year's amounts. Madam clerk, when you're ready, please call the vote on the amendment.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes, we're back to the main motion as amended, is there any other discussion on the main motion?
Uh, just one quick thing, uh, from administration, so in our levy, it mentions, um, the police pension fund, now that we've made that change to the police, to reflect fire pension, I guess for the next budget going forward, it'll, it'll, the line item will be police and fire pension?
Correct.
Okay, just one amendment.
That's a good point, thank you. Anyone else? Madam clerk, on the motion as amended.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes, next is approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen nineteen, an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the village of Peoria Heights, trustee DeVore?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen nineteen.
Second.
All right, go ahead, please, trustee DeVore.
Okay, so, earlier this year, the governor of Illinois had signed into, like, signed into action in All Workers Paid Leave Act, um, since we're home rule, there, like, the stipulations aren't as specific for us as what they are for, like, I don't know, like, just your normal business, so, um, council thought it was important that we put into action, like, what our policy is gonna be for all paid, for, like, paid, um, PTO, paid leave for all workers, which is what you have in front of you, so this is just our version of what we're doing to be compliant with that new, um, Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
Discussion, or questions for trustee DeVore? Well explained, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes, trustee DeVore, anything else under administration or finance?
Not today, mayor.
Okay, we would be at economic and community development, we have one item, the first is approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, a resolution of the village of Peoria Heights accepting an agreement for professional services with Hutchinson Engineering for Construction Observation Services for roadway improvements on War Memorial Drive at Central Avenue, trustee Kazam, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, go, go ahead, please.
So, um, as this, uh, ordinance says, this is for roadway improvements, pardon me, on War Memorial and Central, we already, this is the second part of something we discussed at our last meeting, um, and the improvements have already been completed, I believe, along Paris, so this will be the improvements along War and, um, and Central as it's, as we have new development in that area with the new Bex, uh, station, so I don't know if Wayne has more to offer on that, but...
Just, yeah, Paris was done, and really helpful to have Hutchinson out there, I mean, especially working this time of year because of the cold temperature and making sure things done appropriately, so, Paris was actually, uh, open this morning, so, which is a good thing, so, uh, just a little update, I, it seems to me that Bex has a little bit more site work, site concrete to do, uh, I think that my, the last report I got that Central and War was approved by IDOT, so, again, um, we need to order some traffic signal equipment, things like that, uh, and then they would start, uh, on that improvement, so, I think, are the biggest factor being the weather this time of year to get that improvement completed, and the materials for the traffic signals.
We have an open date yet for Bex?
I, I wouldn't predict one at this point, just given the weather, um, and the access issues, um, but, uh, traffic signals, you know, are like eight weeks out, which is pretty good for that type of thing, that's what I've heard, so that would put us, you know, first part of next year, February maybe timeframe.
And it all hinges on, on that, their opening?
That's what I've heard, yes, yes, because IDOT controls the access, plus we have to replace, uh, Central, um, in its entirety, in that block, and then, and, uh, put a turn lane in on War, and then the traffic signals, yeah.
Trustee Kazam, or, um, Wayne, can you, just for a novice like myself, explain to me what construction observation service means, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty good at observance.
Like a project manager, but I'll let Wayne...
Yeah, it's, it's like a project manager on a, on a road project, uh, you know, bigger municipalities will have staffs to do that, you know, an engineering staff that does things like this in-house, so the village does not, so it's just a, a very prudent thing to do on our roads, you know, to have somebody out there looking things over, making sure things are done in accordance with the specs that have been prepared, things are the right depth, and things like that, and they also perform materials testing, to make sure that the materials are strong enough, like the concrete gets tested, things like that, so, that's, you know, you can call it observation inspection, but it's, it's really a, uh, something you do to protect yourself, you know, uh, not to say contractors are not honest folks, but I mean, just, just a good assurance. Now, in, in this contract, uh, because of Central and War Drive, it's something that IDOT would, would expect to see as well, so it's more of a requirement from IDOT standpoint.
Well, I think it'd be great to get that, Bex going, that way people who leave cookies can order Bex and get chicken, and they're all set.
All right, we won't ask what kind of cookies trustee get, it's a regular, but it's, um, any other discussion? All right, madam clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes, um, trustee Kazam, anything else from you?
No, nothing, thank you, mayor.
Wayne, any updates on any economic development or grants, anything going on?
Uh, the next, uh, issue we have is, uh, an RFQ for zoning code, so we're thinking about putting a RFQ out for zoning code, uh, here soon, uh, working on that right now. We have the grant request in for Monroe Avenue, that's a federal grant, probably expect like a March timeframe to hear something about that, and then we're also looking into, uh, parks development grants, uh, primarily for the Bluff area and maybe the River area, so that's, things we're looking at right now.
Uh, would Tri-County be interested in, in, uh, doing the, the zoning overview, or is that gonna be...
It's something that it's, we would hire a consultant for, um, some, similar to the, uh, comprehensive plan process, it, you know, might be a similar, uh, consultant that does that type of work.
Would the Park District be involved with it, with the Bluff?
Yeah, we'd, we'd certainly welcome the Park District to be involved as a partner, you know, in that, uh, any grant that has to do with the Bluff or the riverfront, that'd be a great partner to have, yeah.
Uh, Wayne, I, again, Sean and I were talking last week, the, um, electric vehicle charging outlets that you, I think, have requests in for Prospect Road, could those, uh, could we ask, the, the library be included in that?
The, the library is included, I think, in the, the request, we did a partnership with the city of Peoria.
They are, okay.
They are included in that, yeah, Sean and I talked about that.
Okay, good, I didn't know that.
So that's a great location if we do get the grant, or if not, in the future, to have EV charging, there's also another grant that Tri-County is, is participating in right now, uh, with the, uh, Peoria Area Economic Development Group for more charging stations, a different grant program, and, uh, this is for private locations specifically, so there is a location, a property owner along War Drive that's expressed interest, so we'll put their name in for that one as well.
So, if we were to put in those charging stations, would that be a revenue generating source for the village, or?
It, it could be, I mean, uh, what, what I know about it is, uh, these would be installed by a private vendor, um, so there'd probably be a license or lease agreement to occupy, say, if we put some out here at Village Hall, there'd be a license agreement, uh, they may pay a sum because they hopefully would get revenue off of those, uh, so that's the way the new systems are set up. My experience in Normal is we, we went ahead and put them in, uh, and unless there were Tesla stations, we, we owned and operated them, yeah.
Were they revenue generating?
They were not there, but I mean, that was fifteen years ago, so, so the new, the new model is private companies own and operate and collect revenue, yeah.
That's a good question. All right, anyone else? Let's move on to, uh, general comments from the audience, if anyone would like to make a comment, please come forward, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes, I am.
Anne Lockhart, seven two two East Marietta, I just want to thank Dustin for what he's done towards the water bill situation, and, you know, whatever we can do to help many of our citizens is greatly appreciated, and I have one question, we tried paying a water bill online, and then there was like a five dollars charge to do it, um, so I dropped my little check in the box out there, but is that going to be, I mean, is it now, or was my husband just looking at the wrong thing?
It's based on water bill, I believe, and I'm not sure why it would be, that's kinda, it seemed like kinda high as a regular bill.
Essentially what's happening is anytime you use a credit card or a debit card, the credit cards and debit cards companies themselves, like Visa, MasterCard, et cetera, they all charge processing fees to businesses, um, typically that's absorbed by the business themselves, as a utility, we're trying to keep the cost to the residents at just the cost to provide the service, so those processing fees to use the credit or debit cards are passed on to the residents, um, that's what that five dollar fee is, is basically the cost to run that card.
Okay, so is there a difference between the card and PayPal?
Um, I am not sure, have, not having tried it, but my guess is that the fees would be similar, since they typically run through, I mean, through PayPal, you're still usually using a credit card or a debit card.
Yeah, 'cause it goes back into the...
Yeah.
I think the PayPal fee is like one point five percent of whatever the charge is.
That's closer to the debit card fee than the credit card fee, so that would be a smaller fee.
Okay, just wondering how it got there.
Do we know what that is?
I don't know.
Because I was surprised to hear that there's even a fee.
I don't know what the rate is, but like, my, both businesses run on the ACH automatic withdraw, and I wanna say it was like a dollar ninety on the salon side and like seventy-some cents on the boutique side, but it, when I paid with my debit card for my home, it was eight dollars, so I feel like the ACH is significantly cheaper.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the audience? One, once, twice, comments from the audience are closed, we would be at miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous to come for the board?
Uh, we held, uh, we had the, uh, Christmas market here in Tower Park, uh, this past weekend, I, I think despite the weather, um, saw Mike Bailey there, uh, as well as trustee DeVore and, uh, trustee Weisenberg, um, I think it was, trustee Weisenberg has described it in the past as magical, I don't know, uh, wait for him to add his two cents in, um, but, uh, I think it was a very successful event, and, uh, I think hopefully the residents had a good time.
Thank you, anyone else?
We had no incidents. And no incidents, yeah.
Yeah, the, the fog kinda gave it a Halloween feel, but it was, it was pretty nice, it was fun.
It was still magical.
Uh, Chris, a quick update on ice picking?
Yeah, sure, so the ice picking is underway, this Montclair neighborhood is, was done last week, we're over in the Toledo area by Anne Lockhart there, and, um, we've got three more days of runs, the last run will take place Thursday night at two AM to six AM, we're gonna do that, 'cause it's gonna affect Prospect, and we're gonna try and, um, not affect any restaurants or things like that as best we can.
So, question for you, Chris, I had a gentleman who was, um, house had been done two days prior, but he was still getting a lot of debris, if you will, in his filter, is that typical? I know we're all on the same system, the water still flows.
Right, so, it is affecting, so, some people are getting tags like three days, because the lack of valves in the village's system is an issue, so if one of our valves doesn't work, we have to move two, three blocks, and that, just when they're put, putting the ice in, just affects pressure, and, yes, everything, obviously, we're turning, every valve we have in those neighborhoods is being turned, and water's moving in all kinds of different directions and stirring stuff up, we, we appreciate everybody's patience with this, we're trying to get the, uh, the, the best water we can out there.
We appreciate the work.
Yep.
Is there an update on the hill? The hill was, is closed?
Oh, the hill was just closed for regular maintenance.
Okay.
Every, every, the first Tuesday of every month, we cleaned that hill up, yeah.
Chris, one thing, um, just to follow up on trustee Weisenberg's question, um, I wish I would like to, I wish I could say I was shocked to hear some of the valves not working up to par, but, um, one of the things that I have heard is, we've also been having some main breaks as well, uh, with this?
Yeah, well, that, that wasn't, that was, that occurred before the ice picking went through the pipe, just so everybody knows that, a, a valve was unfortunately closed a little too quickly, and we've had one, so, it was last night, yeah.
Okay.
But the guys...
It's holding up?
Yeah, we all stuck around till eleven o'clock last night and got it fixed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Uh, trustee DeVore, I can't remember if we reported on our meeting on, regarding Waterton Curran at the last meeting or not, is, um...
I don't remember if we did or not, I don't think we did.
Would you please do that?
Sure, um, so we did have a good meeting with Waterton Curran, um, it was, uh, myself, the mayor, um, Wayne, Director Aldrich was in there, and then Chief Sutton, so we went back to them and kinda told them what we were looking for as far as, like, the scope of information that we want to have about the, our current water department, and what that would look like if we were to entertain an offer from another company to purchase it, um, so we did give them a list of all the things we were looking for, like what, uh, how the whole transaction would work, so they were going to submit a, so a proposal to us on what that would look like cost-wise to provide that information, and then we'll move forward with that, um, once we get that from them, I don't know, have we heard from them since then?
No, I just, I sent them some information today and asked that very question, so it shouldn't, I wouldn't expect it's, I would hope within the week, yeah.
Yeah, the people we talked to were, um, were very optimistic that they could get all of the data that we were looking for and answer all of our questions, um, it was a really informative and good meeting, so I'm anxious to see, um, the data that they end up providing back to us.
And I'm hoping we can approve that as soon as possible, council has said, since it's a professional service of a group we're already using, that, um, we can streamline this and make it happen quickly, um, Mike, you, Bailey, you wrote up a pretty good summary of that meeting, would you send that out to all the trustees, please? All right, and, uh, thank you, anything else?
Mayor, one other thing, Chris? I know we're not done with the ice picking yet, but, uh, do we get any feedback from the company, is it effective, like, are we, are we, um...
We are definitely getting stuff out of the pipes.
Okay.
For sure, yep, and we'll, we'll know, like, so, just an example, when they started, like, say they started a run, it was flowing a hundred and thirty gallons a minute, when they were done, it was flowing a hundred and seventy-eight gallons a minute, and...
Wow.
And the pressure had dropped by pretty significantly, so, less pressure to push the water through is gonna relieve pressure on pipes, and hopefully less water main breaks, and just, uh, it seems to be, be very effective, obviously, we won't know until people are, which, they really never do, say, oh, my water's really clean today, so, even when it is, they don't just, you know, announce it, they only...
Is, is there a way, though, that we could reach out to the affected areas, um, and see, just ask them, you know, have you noticed any difference, or send some sort of survey out to them, um, so that we can get the feedback, because, I mean, if this is really effective in their neighborhoods, the sooner we know that it is, the faster we can work towards going into another neighborhood.
Sure, absolutely, because this is, uh, as we all know now, that's, I mean, there's literally these three guys that do this in the nation, so, you know, we were, we were hoping this was gonna be done a lot earlier, but it's just, that's, I mean, I would like, I would like to find out if it's, definitely wanna know if, if we're getting results out of it, for sure.
So, I assume as we move past this, we'll have some metrics to collect, um, with complaint calls that come in, so we'll know if the, the quality has improved, what percentage of the water system was ice picked, if you had to put a number to it?
Um, maybe a quarter?
Okay.
I would, I think, I was thinking it was maybe gonna be more, but I don't think, I think we're getting about a quarter of it.
Okay. But you're seeing roughly twenty percent drop in pressure and twenty-five percent increase in flow, uh, just based on that?
Right, on a cup, on a couple of them, yeah, little, I mean, every one of them's gaining gallons per minute, and the pressure's getting... gaining gallons per minute, and the pressure's getting reduced a little bit.
Are they thinking it needs to be done more than once, or is once enough?
What's that?
Are they thinking it needs to be done more than once, to get more or less, or...
Yeah, I think if it, if it, if it shows results, it would be something maybe you would do instead of every 100 years, you know, maybe every 25 years or something?
And maybe something we have to do on a rotation, right?
Right, yeah.
We have like, once we get through everything, like, maintenance each area.
Five, you know, 10 years from now, start.
This might be a stupid question, but what, what would be a perfect flow of a new pipe, like, how many gallons compared to the pressure? So where are we at compared to...
Depends on, it just, that depends on how higher water is and how big the pipe is, it's just, I just wanted to...
I didn't know if there was something you were expecting to, a result you were expecting to get to, like a number, or...
No, uh-uh, no.
No, okay.
They just, before they start it, they take some numbers and say, this is what we got going on, and by the time it gets there, that's what we're looking at, but it is, it's definitely showing some results.
Sounds successful, I thought we did it.
Any other miscellaneous? I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for discussion of employee compensation, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C1.
I'd like a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Whigginson?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into executive session, we will return to this room, not to conduct any business, only to adjourn. Okay, we are back in regular session, there is no further business to conduct this evening, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?